Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start the meeting. It is six o'clock. It is April 24th. This is opening of the Board of Plaidens meeting. Are we good to go, right? I think so. All right. If I could get a motion to waive the reading of the Zoom.
No more.
And if I have second.
Second.
And roll call.
Argue.
The noise I.
And nickel's eye. First up is the Treasury Warrant 22W14 and Payroll 22PW14.
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Argue.
The noise I.
And nickel's eye excluding any COA wages. Next on the agenda is the meeting minutes from the December 27th.
Approved as written.
I think it's January 10th.
Oh, it said, it says, oh, it says December 27th on my agenda.
My manager.
Oh, okay. Oh, I better, I better go back then. I've got my agenda messed up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's the manager.
Mine's a January 10th.
All right. So then I'm gonna have to go back up and correct it. Okay, so it's, it's Warrant 22W15 and Payroll 22PW15.
Motion approved.
Yeah. So I have a second. All right. Roll call.
Argue.
The noise I.
Nickel's eye excluding COA wages. And then the minutes, I'm sorry, from January 10th.
Motion approved as written.
Second.
Do you have a quick agenda? Okay. Yeah, I'm fine now. I just have a second. All right. Any comments or corrections? Now, roll call.
Argue.
The noise I.
And nickel's eye. And I did not do the pledge, so I do that now. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have any public comment? Yeah.
Dick Williams Overlook. At the last meeting, you told me to start going around the various towns and try to get something going on the byway, which I stopped down to see Amy. Yeah, I think that's that. And it was nice to see her. And she is gonna put me in touch with the proper people.
Okay. Now, you're gonna get us a copy of that too, right? To get something to run, a copy of the proposal for the bycast? Byway?
There was, all there was, was a plan, you know, made up for Central Mass way back and it stayed on the shelf. Nothing ever happened. And Otto Lee's from the Town of Holden Planet Board, he has that original plan. But I have no copies.
Is that, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Sure.
Do you have an electronic ver, does he have an electronic version of that?
I don't believe.
If he did.
This was back in the 70s.
Oh, that's not good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I am, I have a meeting this Thursday. And I will be talking to Janet and at Central Mass Regional Planning about this.
Okay. So, yeah, if you can, obviously.
We'll get.
Anything you can give me, I can help you.
You can.
Ron in, because I had asked him, because I think the last time we were looking for some kind of information, so he really didn't really know much about it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hope you do.
We did discuss that at our meeting.
I haven't been talking to anybody about it.
I'm really happy to help you where I can, actually.
All right. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Any other public comments? All right. We are going to go to department head updates. And first is Anita Carlson, clerk.
Am I good here?
Yep. Yeah.
Well, as you know, we've had a new assistant town clerk for maybe the last five or six weeks. Her name is Candace Livingston. And she was previously the admin in the assessor's office. And so that's a real asset in our department, because she already knows the department. She has a good, you know, a really good idea of what even happens in our office. So we're moving along nicely, and it's, it's great to have her there. About 10 days ago, we mailed out the annual town census. That's also called a street listing. And we mailed, I think it was almost 30, just under 3,500 pieces of mail. And what happens when you mail all those out is they start to come back. So right now, we've got stacks of census to update. And we've been, we've been moving forward with dog licenses. Today, we've licensed 370, 17 dogs for a total of $3,164. And we, we've had 22 people take advantage of the exempt fee for 70 and over that we voted at the November special town meeting. So I was surprised, because we really didn't do any advertising. It was just to be included as a line on the form, but people are picking it up. So that's a good thing. We offer online unit pay for, for dog licenses. But oddly enough, probably twice as many people still are coming in with a check or cash or mailing in. But I think for the people that do it, you know, to do it online, it's a real convenience for them. So, but we have over 1,600 dogs in town, so we have a long ways to go. But it's moving along nicely. We do, we do print and, and fold the census in-house. So we're looking, a lot of towns outsource it. So we're, we're looking at whether it's a better use of our time, you know, to, to see what it would cost if we did outsource it. But.
So do you manually fold it, or do you have a machine that folds it?
No, we, we do it. We have the dog licenses printed and they come folded. But it's, you know, I looked into machines a long time ago. But actually, I think it's because I'm old school. It's right in front of me. I can look down. I can see what's on it. Sometimes I notice a, from an error or something that I can go to, you know, on, on our voter registration system and fix. But it is pretty labor intensive. So the postage was almost $1,600. So I think if we do, if we did outsource it, that number would drop, because they get a better, you know, volume. But, and then the cost of ink cartridges is through the roof these days, too. But I'm not sure we can get the figures to include it in 20, you know, this next budget. But I'm thinking about that anyway. And we've, we did receive approval for the 20. Based on every 10 years for the federal census, they take a look at all the precinct lines in all communities in Massachusetts, but then actually throughout the, the country. And the goal is to keep all three of our precincts balanced with the same number of registered voters. So we have about 200 households that are going to be getting a notice that their, their precinct is changing. And we just received approval from the state for our draft lines. So we've identified those people. And we'll get notices out to them well before the, the May election cycle. So hopefully, it won't be too disruptive. Most people will just be going across the street anyway. So I don't think it'll be too much of an issue. And I thought that today would be a good time to introduce the political calendar for the 2020 elections. We're going to make nomination papers available on Tuesday, February 8th. And that'll give any candidate six weeks to get signatures before they have to turn the papers into, into our office, which is actually the Board of Registars, the hat that we wear as the Board of Register. And.
Now, Anita, I'm sorry. You always mentioned you'll put this on the website.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we'll public.
And will we put something on the electronic sign?
Yeah, we'll publicize it as well if we can. And keep letting people know. We're not open on Tuesday. I usually, I chose Tuesday as the day to, to make them available. Even though we're not open normally on Tuesday evenings, what I plan to do is publicize that. I'd be more than happy to stay that, that first Tuesday until 7:00, if anybody wants to come in and take out their papers. And the, the last three years, because of COVID, it's been difficult for candidates to get the number of signatures needed. The numbers, it's the same this year as last year. I think it was 42 signatures. And it's based on a percentage of the number of people who voted in the last gubernatorial race. So that was in, I think, 2018. So, and I think there's a cap, like after you get to, it might be 100 signatures, that just stays there. But we'll keep probably going up until it gets to 100 signatures. And then the bottom of your list has the open seats that are up this year. So a few less than last year, because last year, we had a couple of one or two-year seats that we had had vacancies on. So this one's pretty routine. And, I don't know if there's anything, you know, any other questions, but that's pretty much what you've been up to.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Anita? All right. One more. All right. Thank you, Anita. Appreciate it. All right. Unless anybody has any objections, I was gonna, I was gonna, we do have the assessors on there. Okay, great. I was looking at the other ones. No, she's, she's good. So Amy? I think you're on mute.
Can you hear me out?
I'm in the left-hand corner, Amy. There should be a microphone. You just gotta switch it on.
Why?
I think we heard you. Yes.
Okay. Right. So just a rundown of a few things that we have going on in the assessor's office. Today was the first day of our new admin starting. Her name is Tessa Gurney. She comes to us for the Hardwick Fire Department, so she's done some administration work there. She's also computer savvy and eager to learn and looking forward to the challenges of the office. So that's a good positive thing. We're excited about that. We are currently awaiting the first year's excise tax commitment, which is our largest commitment of the year. And usually, when it comes in, we have several folks come into the office to file for abatements due to the fact that they no longer have the cars. And that's usually a sizable commitment. I'm not sure how many bills. We won't know until we get the email, which I'm expecting this week or next week, the latest. I'm currently trying to finish up all of the land plans for the year for the town. We have over 50 plans that I have to take a look at thoroughly, do some research on, and decide what needs to be done with them, whether it's parcel splits or, you know, adding and subtracting acreage or whatever it is that I have to do. I'm currently doing that. We're working on sending out personal property and three ABCs. That will be going out this week. I'll be working with Tessa on that tomorrow. We're currently finishing out abatement season, which we call season. It's for the month of January, so we have one more week. Currently, we have about 10 abatements, two personal properties, and about eight real estate. Once I get them all in, I will work them up and then leave it to the board and have them decide what they'd like to do with them. I did a sales analysis. And it looks like across the board, sales went up 20% from last year, which is average, which is what I'm seeing in the other towns that I'm within as well. Their sales have gone up by 20%. And we're also still accepting exemptions, senior exemptions, the veterans exemption, elderly exemption, wide effect, and that kind of thing. Other than that, just training the new admin. And I'm still trying to figure out the office myself without Candace there. I'm kind of just kind of poke around, or I'm bothering her and Anita. But things are going well. I'm organizing things and getting a handle on all of the growth that Rutland has.
Thank you. Amy and Ron, I assume you're talking about new growth projections for the budget?
New growth, I'm talking with Harold directly, so I'm not working with her. I'm working with Harold.
Oh, with Harold, okay. Does anybody have any questions for Amy? All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming on. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you. Good night.
All right. Next up is Joe Buckley from the DPW. Is he there, Joe? There he is. We can see him.
I'm here, it just takes a minute.
Oh, there we go.
Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I just have a couple of things I'd like to go over with you. Big business right now. This time of year, it's snow and ice. Also some water stuff. And briefly review our, our upcoming projects for the spring. Snow and ice, although we haven't had any big storms, we've been very busy with what I call nuisance storms. We're out quite a bit putting salt and sand down. We've gone through quite a bit of our, our supply budget. This year, we were hoping that the brine would cut down on some of the salt use. I sent you folks a flyer on brine. Did everyone get it? Plainly, what it does for us is if we had like a one or two-inch storm, we, we might put salt down immediately around an inch, and then again around the, before we go home. What the brine allows us to do, if we're able to pre-treat, take and knock down one of those treatment cycles. And brine uses a lot less salt. Some other factors that affect our supply costs going into the spring, and will determine the size of our deficit. Salt's gone up quite a bit. We're buying off the state contract like we have for many, many years, and it's up almost 25%. So other than that, we're doing okay. We face similar challenges as the other departments with staffing. We have had some illness, and we have had some folks out due to COVID. And it's put some stress on the staff, but frankly, they have done a great job and really tried to stick it out and everybody's plowed extra stuff, for lack of a better description. Any questions about brine? I know it's the first time we really use it here in Rutland. And we are kind of in, it started out as an experiment for us, but it's working out pretty well.
If I could just comment. Now, I took a tour over at DPW, because I wanted to see, understand how the brine was done here. It's actually very interesting, because our DPW guys were able to use their welding tools and stuff to actually build the brine containment center and how they make the brine and stuff, which is, which is very unique. And it's a testament to our DPW guys who had the knowledge of how to build a system that overall is gonna save us some money. But I wanted to give kudos to the DPW guys involved. I think it, it really is a testament to their skill that we have this system in place.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions regarding? No, I think we're good on that, Joe.
Very good. So drinking water. We're still under an emergency certification to operate our drinking water facility. Temporary certification has been actually granted to me to act as primary operator. We have hired a completely new staff. We have three new workers, but they haven't officially taken over, according to the Commonwealth, yet. They're probably, probably a couple of months out and at least one or two certifications to finish. But for the most part, 75% or 80% of that plant is being operated by town staff. They've done a great job, and we're, we're turning a corner from where we were six months ago. Some other water department challenges. Similar, we're actually affected by supply chain issues as well. You're aware, we don't have, we're not able to get fluoride. And the latest one today was we're having trouble buying water meters. So it hit, hit home with us as well. But all in all, drinking water has been going very well compared to where we were six months ago. We're able to produce water. We have licensed staff that are town employees. And, and we've got the big job on Palm Augusta, probably three-quarters finished. Again, we've turned a corner with water. Is there any questions I could answer on that?
Anybody on the board have any questions?
I do. I may have missed it, Joe, but I'm wondering, this is Carol. Have we made an announcement to the townspeople that we are no longer operating with fluoride in the water, so that the parents can make other arrangements?
I notify, I, there was a form we had to fill out to notify the state, and I sent the information on to the Board of Health. But because the decision to fluoride comes from the elected body, it would probably have to come from your office or, or Ron's office and the Board of Health, not so much public works.
Okay.
To answer your question, to the best of my knowledge, I don't think it's been made public, no.
Because, yeah, I thought we somewhat touched on that when we talked about.
We weren't out, I think we were out of fluoride at the time that we talked about last time. But if we certainly are now, parents will need to.
So at least on the website, and maybe, maybe put something on the sign. But, yeah, because parents may want to substitute.
Joe, can you, can you let me know, what is, what is the impact? I know that it has to do with teeth and stuff. Can you say what the impact of not having fluoride is on people? Do you know that?
I really couldn't comment on that. That, that's public health. It just gets loaded that we add fluoride to the water for health reasons. And there's a nationwide shortage for the material, and we're unable to do it at this time.
Because, I mean, a lot of parents will want to supplement, and maybe even some adults and stuff. So we should make them aware that they're not getting it.
Just there's no fluoride. Joe, just give me the date that you stopped using fluoride in the water. Send that to me and stuff, and then I'll check with the Board of Health and see if there's anything else I should say. Otherwise, it'll just be that we're not using fluoride for this period of time until it comes back.
Previous to the, the supply issues, we actually got awards for our fluoride treatment. We've done a great job with it. It's just the material's not available.
Check it out. Leah?
Yeah. Joe, it's Leah. I wonder when the next water bill's going out, if it makes sense to put a note in the water bills that go out that the water's not currently being fluoridated, also in addition to the other outreach measures.
We could put something in there, sure.
Whatever the Board of Health has.
Yeah. So Ron, once you talk to the Board of Health, just let Joe know what you're gonna put on the website and whatever it might be appropriate for the bills. Anybody else have anything regarding water? Anything else regarding water?
I just, it's Leah again. I think we need to be mindful when fluorination starts again, that we communicate that also, so people aren't overfluorinating.
Correct.
So it's not that one.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? I am going to try and share the screen, so you can see our project list.
You're gonna have to, if you're gonna have to share a screen with them.
I don't have a computer anymore.
No, she doesn't have a computer anymore. So can't you just hit share?
I think Peer has to allow.
And he asked about any presentations, and I wasn't aware of any, so I don't know if.
He just says he's all set.
He's all set. So go ahead and share.
Yeah. It's just a spreadsheet. It's really not a big presentation.
Yeah, you just share on the screen, so. As long as he allows you to.
Can you see my spreadsheet?
No.
Just bear with me, please. There it is.
Yep, there we go.
There you go. We've got that.
Okay. I recently met with the town administrator to go over some of our bigger projects that started out as DPW, most of our big capital projects. And this is my master spreadsheet. It's frankly a work in progress, which is why I didn't get a copy in advance of the meeting. But I thought I would just touch upon some of these bigger projects and at least give you a status update, okay?
Yeah.
Everyone, I'm sure is familiar with the Palm Augusta Road paving from Maine to Richards. That's CHN Engineers, that's the federal tip-in project with the state. That's scheduled to go out for bid in October of '22. We just talked about the water treatment plant staffing and the control updates. That's, if you, if I scroll over a little bit, you know, if I lose anybody, please bear with me. There are percentages, but I'd estimate that's around 75% to 80% complete. The Palm Augusta Water Main job, that's also probably about 75% complete. That was estimated at $600,000. That came in at $573,000 and change. After that, we have the II investigation. That, that's mostly complete, but I didn't close it out yet, because we're still waiting on the state to finish their updates to the meter at the town line. But it's been a great project. We turned a corner and we identified a lot of problems. After that is the Western Sampson, they're gonna do the II repairs on the five miles of pipe owned by DCR. That is scheduled to go out for bid probably in about a month. That's estimated at half a million. We got special permission to do that from DCR, because if we waited for them, it would probably take 10 to 15 years to get this work done. And if we do it now, it'll probably save us some money. Where was I? Okay. The risk resilience and assessment for US EPA, that's a federal requirement. We're actually late on that by a year or so, but they, we contacted EPA recently, and they're, they're happy with our progress. The next one is the DEP drought management plan. That's part of a consent order that gave us permission to take a little bit more water out of our reservoir. And they're basically worried that if we had another drought in Massachusetts, because we don't have a second source, we could be in trouble. So they, they wrote that into the administrative consent order. I skipped over the second source, because we currently don't have a formal proposal or funding identified yet. But it's on the radar. We never let the second source fall off, because it's, it's critical to the town. We have additional water main replacement planned in the, not inward road, but roads off of that Sunnyside Edson. That was part of the original capital plan. That's going to design, probably going to design this summer. I don't know if we'll be able to get construction going over there this summer. Then we have the replacement of the three rooftop heaters at the library. That's going out for bid. We just got that one back. That's at, that's Renaud out of Sutton, and that came in at $60,000. And that has to be done by the end of May. They're also, like all most contractors, having some supply problems, but they're gonna make every effort to get that in before it gets hot this summer, because those are both AC units and heaters. The, the next one down here, the roof replacement is at the community center. We had that estimated at $90,000. I have met with the engineer here listed, time bond engineers. And myself and the town administrator recently had a phone meeting with them. And they're gonna, and they're gonna develop plans and specifications for us. And once they do, along with an engineer's estimate, and we're gonna figure out how and when we proceed for bidding and if we have enough funding. But we should have something in the, in plan form, probably early this summer. After that, I've got the pool bath house that we could, that's where the drain is broken.
Joe, if you could just stop for one second, just I want to talk about the roof for a second. So Joe was talking about it. We are concerned that there may not be enough funding for the roof. So we're trying to get all the plans developed, so that if we have to go to free cash in the summer town meeting, the annual town meeting, we'll be able to do that. So, but there is a serious concern that we're gonna be short on that project. So I wanted to let you know that that's something we're gonna be looking at for the annual town meeting. All right, I'm sorry, Joe.
No, no, it's fine. So the bath, the pool bath house, that, that's supposed to be, DPW staff is gonna break open the floor there and expose the broken drain. And we have to go out for bid to get a plumber in there to make repairs to that. That should probably get started in the next couple of months, before it gets warm, probably March. And I didn't call up, but I, these are headings within DPW, water sewer buildings, town roads. I hope that helps you guys focus on it. And I'll try and get a copy of this to everybody when it's done. The next one is the Maple Ave sidewalk replacement project. We estimated that at $600,000. That came in at $595,898, pretty close. But that's on schedule to get started as soon as the snow's gone. And then the next one is Route 56 and Route 68. We're doing mostly coordination stuff with this one. This is Mass DOT's transportation bond bill. I wrote $500,000 here. I don't have a good estimate for how much they're gonna spend out here in Rutland. I do know they want to do a lot of brine, and although they work on Route 56, and they want to do some micro plating and sealing. work on Route 56 and they want to do some micro plating and sealing of Route 68. When I have some more details on that, I'll make that available. Some other items that aren't on here, we recently found out we have another culvert, a big culvert down on Route 56 that's failing. It's the one, I can't remember the name of the pond just before you get to 68 coming from the town center. I have more on that. I had that evaluated. And then we also have a failed culvert on Wartus Street near the Princeton Town Line. We're probably going to try and go for grants for one or both of those. So I can take questions now. I know it's a lot, but this is where we're at right now.
Joe, just one other project that's not on here yet, but we've had a lot of discussion about and we're going to discuss in the future is the sewer line from the community center to the main line. Could you just talk about that briefly?
Sure. We, we looked at it in-house and conventional design would make a pressure sewer, it'd have to go 900 feet or a gravity sewer probably go closer to 1,500 or 1,700 feet and they both, they came in at industry standard estimates between 100,000 and 100 and say 150,000 depending on which way you go. So we reached out to Weston Sampson. They're going to do a letter report that gives us a better ballpark estimate of what we could consider. I should have that probably in a couple of weeks.
That's something we're considering using ARPA funds for as part of water sewer infrastructure.
In simple terms, the sewer in front of the building is, it's a pressure sewer and we don't want to tie into the pressure sewer. It doesn't, doesn't meet current standards. So how do I stop sharing? Okay, there we go.
Does anybody have any questions for Joe?
I think we're good, Joe.
I do have.
All right, I'm sorry. Carol was choking.
Was choking.
She has a comment.
So I watched some of the MMA.
Yeah.
Just, just needed, I was in the middle of a drink. Watching the MMA this weekend, there seems to be a lot of infrastructure monies coming the way of Massachusetts, so I want to make sure that we, every single penny that we can get, and I really, they're really talking about sewer and water and I, and I, I wonder, you know, what, what are we, what is going through town that is going to other places? And, you know, that would be not just Rutland and wanting or needing to tap those funds, but that, you know, we can get that because it's, it's other towns that were, that are using our land to get to places, so.
So just if I could, Joe, you can comment more on this. So one of the things we were looking at was trying to get a grant to go from Rutland down through Holon for the sewer line that goes all the way down, all the way to eventually to Blackstone. Well, our part of it is what we're concerned about. We had asked for money and it, it didn't go through in the last infrastructure request. Senator, Senator has asked us for more projects to do with infrastructure. I don't know if we're going to resubmit that one or not because that's the, one of the most important ones that we could do, but that's one of the things we're going to have to talk about, what other things might we propose for sewer infrastructure.
It sounded like they were begging us to ask for it.
Well, they do have a lot of money, but it's, it's not as easy to get as they, you know, but we are going to continue to talk about it.
Thank you.
And then the wood house, the roof is done, so.
The front of the roof is done, right.
So we requested rent funds to reimburse whatever we spent on that?
So we don't have to request it. We, I think we actually got 50% of it. Joe, then we already have 50% of that money and then we could use that and then the other 50% we send in forms for, right? For the wood house roof?
I believe that's that correct, yes.
So we got to finish that project. We got to get whatever paperwork they need for the second part of that grant. The first part we already have.
Did we ever look at the garage to see if there, or do any?
Joe's guys went up on the garage and they did a spot fix. Joe, talk about that?
We did look at the garage. We did a spot fix, but we're probably going to have to get back up there in warm weather, take a closer look at it.
Do we know if it's leaking at this point now?
The front part of the roof?
I was there, I was there recently with someone from the Historical Society. I didn't see it leaking at that time, no.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody have anything else?
Obviously, we're going to apply for every stitch. Do you mind if I just go ahead quick?
Yep, go ahead.
Obviously, we'd apply for every stitch of funding we could. It's just oftentimes we end up combining it with some engineering work or some engineering inspection work because we can't always, the contract administration is a challenge. We're not all that big. I would just caution everyone to be cognizant of that, that's all.
Joe, hang out for a few minutes after this because I want to, we're going to talk about something else a little bit.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, folks.
All right, thank you. All right. Next is that update from the town administrator?
Okay, so let me start with the reason why I kept Joe for a minute. There's a grant process. The state has combined a bunch of grants into a one-stop kind of grant process. And I spent some time with the town planner reviewing it, trying to figure out, is there any area of this money we could apply for? Quite frankly, it's very, very difficult because it's another one of those grants that is more designed for cities or if you have a specific business come to town helping with the infrastructure under what's called a mass works program. So I did send the information to Joe today after meeting with David. We went through it. We couldn't figure out something to apply for. It does have strategic planning group for like developing a, like a town plan already, but we already have those that David's working through CMRPC for, the strategic plan and stuff. We couldn't find anything else. Is there, there may be a possibility of, of water sewer infrastructure, but the problem again with that is it's water sewer infrastructure, even road infrastructure that ties into bringing a business to town and that may not be them. So Joe's going to look at, but I just wanted to let you know, we're at least looking at that process. I hate, I hate when I know there's a pool of money there and I can't get that for, for a specific reason, but we are at least attempting to go down that path. All right, Joe, that's, I don't know if you have any comments on that, but that's, that's the one thing I wanted.
That brought to mind. I mean, Joe, do you see any delays in, in materials for a lot of these projects? Because I know there's a lot of issues in getting materials right now.
Did you hear him, Joe?
Yeah, I got bumped out. I just got back.
Okay. So I was just asking if you, if you anticipate delays because of lack of materials. I know there's a problem with supplies for a lot of construction. Is that going to affect the projects that we have started right now or anticipating?
I would imagine.
Looks like he froze.
Yeah, he froze. I shocked him.
Let's, let's go through him and then if he comes back, we'll go through. So let's talk about a couple of things. I don't have a lot to discuss because we're focused more on budget and negotiations right now. But the Economic Development Commission has now met twice. I'm glad to report that we do have officers. Randy Jordan has agreed to be chairman of the Economic Development Commission. I think that's a tremendous benefit for us to have him as chair. Jeffrey Gibbs, as you know, a longtime realtor in town, has agreed to be vice chairman of the Economic Development Commission. And Jessica Johnson, the head of the Cornerstone Bank, has agreed to be the clerk of that committee. We had a long, I think, very positive discussion about, you know, we went through the economic development plan and talked about their ideas for economic development and had a very positive conversation. I'm really excited about this particular group of people because I think it's really a class act group with a lot of knowledge. What we decided at the next meeting is they want to look at the current zoning map to see, they, first, they want to learn what areas we can actually develop industrial or commercial properties that were on, and also look at what potential may be of changing some of that. Obviously, it has to be done at the planning commission level, but they can make recommendations and have, open up our dialogue, but they, in order to first understand what happens if a business comes down, they need to understand the locations and what the benefits might be. So that's going to be our next meeting. David George has been a tremendous asset for the commission. I think he's going to be great. And also I'm bringing in David McKay to discuss some of those issues with them as well. One of the issues they also want to bring to the table and discuss is the issue of small contractors who are working out of their homes and residences. As you know, that's been a significant issue here in Rutland. So they want to see if there's a way then that we can deal with that issue in a positive way, potentially look at land where we could put some of those small contractors so they're not working in residential communities, but they do want to look at that issue. So I think it's an important issue to look at. So that's the beginning of it and I think it's a very good start. It's going to take time to get them up and running, but it's nice to know that we have a group of a lot of different professionals who have a wide range of experience throughout town that I think can help this group. So, so that was really, really good news. I've had to act as chairman kind of for the first two meetings, but now Randy will take that over. So I'll fill up, I'm going to do the meeting minutes for the first one. I'll do the meeting minutes for the second one. Then after that, Jessica can take over the meeting minutes, but I, I felt really, really good about that. We had a couple hour meeting tonight and I thought, I thought, what I think I liked best about it was it was good dialogue among every different person on that committee offered something. I had an also opportunity to meet with the Historical Commission. As you know, they're working on the prison camp issue and I connected them with DCR, Department of Conservation, because the Department of Conservation owns the land at the state park with the prison campus, so there has to be a relationship between them to actually get things done. There was a lot of discussion. The Historical Commission has put together a basic preliminary plan for what they want to do and I, I'm not going to, I'm not the expert at this, but one of the things they want to do is put a gate, I guess it's almost like a cavern or tunnel, whatever you want to describe it. They want to put a metal gate in front of that so nobody can walk inside of it. They obviously want to get rid of all the graffiti and clean that all, all up. One of the things they really want to do is have a really nice sign that, you know, that explains about the prison camp and everything like that. So they're looking at that sign issue and DCR recommended a company who makes this really, really high quality sign that is graffiti resistant, I guess that's what it's called. Peter, the chairman of the Historical Commission, asked me, are they on the state bid list? I worked with Joe today. We could find them on the state bid list. I called the company. Turns out that they're not on the state bid list, so I recommended to the chairman of the Historical Commission that he send out, they develop a request for quotes. I sent them a kind of a template for that, that they develop a request for quotes and send it out to both the company that DCR recommended and other local vendors that might do signage work. So that was kind of my instructions to give it to them. It's in their court and I'm going to work with them to make sure the request for quotes makes a lot of sense. DCR liked the company because they like to have all their signs in the state parks to be consistent, so they want a sign that matches everything else they do, but that, I think the big issue is the Historical Commission wants the sign to match what they really want, the, the historical type of information. So that's moving forward in a positive way. As you know, most of the work I've been doing in these days has been on dealing with the budget, the fiscal year 2023 budget. I was told potentially that the state budget number from the governor would come out at the end of last week. It did not, so I'm hoping it comes out soon because I've done a lot of the preliminary work on the budget to get ready for it, but I need the state revenue number because it's really important to it. Some other key information we're waiting for is the Bay Path Assessment. Last year, you remember that went up by $100,000 because there was a number of new students. Hoping that there's no new students this year and that that number stays down. The health insurance premium, the class for our health insurance, part, that partially came out at the MMA meeting, but we have to see how that number relates to our risk factors in this specific town. So we're looking at that and Becky's working with the adjuster to find out exactly what that, that class is going to be. Obviously, we're waiting to the school district's number to see what the, you know, our school district says, so that's a big factor. As the chairman asked me a little while ago, I've been talking with Harold about the new growth number. The last couple of years, we've used $418,000 for new growth. Harold always starts, as you know the process, he always starts with a lower number. I think this year he started at, I want to say 350 is his assessment now. He's not going to have the better number, the higher number for me until he sees how our building permits are doing in the spring. So he'll get an indication of how, how many new units and houses are being built in the spring, but I expect that that number's being 418,000. So I'm hoping that, you know, I don't, I can't imagine our building has gone down here. It seems like it's continuously growing. One of the things that Harold pointed out, and I don't have the exact details on this, but, but our, our managed growth bylaw that we had in place, while there's still a number of units that are, still have to be done under next year, the year after, it could reduce the amount of units because they're not grandfathered, so to speak, to that, to that provision. Again, I don't know the real details of that, but that's one of the things he talked about. So that's basically my update. We're going to, you know, talk, obviously, we're doing police negotiations right now. We're going to talk about that later, but it's been busy in terms of, like I say, budget and negotiations. You know, I often comment on why I'm spending so much time with Joe Buckley. I think you get an indication of a lot of projects he's got going on as to why I'm spending so much time with Joe Buckley. He's just constantly asking me to review bid proposals and to review things that he's working on and make sure that, you know, we're doing things correctly. So Joe and I have worked a lot, probably more than the department, and it's not a matter of preference as much as it is just a matter of the way the work that Joe's got performed right now. And that's all I have to report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody have any questions for Ron?
You're right. Through the chair, you're right on the prison camp and all that. It went very well that, that night and it's going to be interesting to see how it turns out.
Trying to be helpful to kind of steer them, to get them to, to develop the plan. And I, I got to say this, I was very happy with DCR and their willingness to work with us. One of the things they originally talked about is they would be willing to put up the labor to help build the sign, but then it turns out the sign they built doesn't match what the Historical Commission wanted. So, but they're willing to provide labor to help out so that we can maximize the 50 grand as much as possible. So I thought DCR deserves a lot of credit for, for really trying to help us through the process. That was the feel I got from it. I don't know about you, Dick, but that, that's the way I felt about it.
It went a lot better than I anticipated. So that was great.
Thank you, Dick.
Regarding the state budget though, I, I also heard that it's 2.7%.
It's what?
2.7% is the state.
So what happens is that in order to get the state revenues, when the governor puts out his budget, he puts out something called a preliminary Cherry Street and it shows you how much you're going to get for the different sources for Rutland specifically. So that's what I'm waiting for is that Cherry Street number and that will change as the Ways and Means Committee votes later in the House and Senate. So the governor's version is kind of the first indication of what the state budget's going to be like. Obviously, it isn't going to approve till the Senate and House passes it, but usually they increase it from the governor's budget. So if you start with the governor's budget, you're probably in pretty good shape because the numbers usually go up. Now, the good thing, I think you're talking about the 2.7%, I'm guessing kind of what you're talking about is that the revenue numbers for the state have been very good this year and they share, they have a formula for sharing any additional state revenue that they have with towns. Now, that's good news, but the problem is we get such a small percentage that it, it may not mean a lot of money. I'm hoping it means a lot, you know, I'd love to see a 200, $300,000 increase in state revenue, but we could be talking thousands, you know, 25,000. I mean, I don't, I'm not expecting a huge number, but it would help me a lot in where I'm at right now with the budget. Because we're going to be blatantly straight up with everybody. It's going to be a very tough budget year again because we just don't have the revenues that come in to, to match the expenditures. I'm trying to, my goals at the beginning of this process to put it back at 2021 numbers. Remember, we had the 2021 numbers and we cut them off? I'm trying to put it back to the 2021 numbers and I can tell already it's highly unlikely I'm going to be able to get this back to, even to those 2021 numbers. And we are trying to fix some staffing issues. We, we have problems with, and I've increased a couple of staff positions and I'm sure they're going to go away because I'm going to have to make cuts, but, but I'm trying to at least get one staff member back at DPW and there's some, you know, I'm trying to get, you know, I've been working with Becky and the accountant to get one part-time staff person for each of those two departments and they're in my budget right now, but my guess is in my cuts I'm going to make, they're going to, I'm going to have to lose them again. So it's very, very frustrating to me that it's very difficult to move ahead because I just don't have the numbers and it, you know, I don't see how we can improve the town when we don't have the numbers to do it and it, it's extremely frustrating, but we'll see what it's like once they have all the numbers to put it together. And I told Karen and the finance committee that I expect we'll be able to start looking at departments in the first week of February, somewhere around, I think, the 7th. And the budget books, you know, I've kind of made the budget book and Beth has made copies for everybody, so the budget books are getting closer to being ready. Of course, all the changes I have to make in the next couple of weeks will be in there, but we are, I think, really on target in terms of the process. I feel really good about it. We've invested a lot of time and effort and, you know, the, the process isn't the problem. The problem is money. That's, that's the problem. But I feel good about where we're at.
Anybody else have any questions for Ron?
Joe, I, so can we hear?
I'm sorry about that, guys. So why if I went down to my house?
So I was, I was just curious about the supply shortage and how it would affect our construction projects.
It's tough to say. I do anticipate we'll be affected by some supply issues. We just, it'll depend as the contracts chug along. I know early on during, by means example, the water job, there was a concern about pipe. They shopped around, they were able to come up with more pipe.
So you're anticipating?
Every day is facing the challenge, that's all.
You anticipating over costs so that it may, may affect the, the cost of the project as well?
No, I'm more concerned. No, I'm more concerned being able to complete stuff on time, not so much cost. What's, if anything's going to drive up cost, it's the demand for the people doing the work.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else? All right. A couple of possible motions. The first one is to be utilizing $5,000 of ARPA funds to purchase various supplies related to COVID-19. And I think this came from the fire chief.
Yeah, it came from the fire chief is our emergency management director. You know, I think what it cares that kind of everybody thought that this was going to fade away, the first kind of version of this disease, and now with the new version, it's dragged out a lot longer, so chief wanted to make sure we have supplies, everything from cleaning supplies that we need to keep areas safe, but also things like masks or whatever, basically whatever else they need to get us through this. Not a lot of money, but, but we need to be prepared. We need to have this stuff on.
So, is this going to supply masks and cleaning and everything for all public, for all the town buildings?
Yeah, for us.
Right.
It could help depending upon what he needs, yes, for what we need from town building, correct?
Does anybody have any questions or any requests? Does somebody want to make a motion?
White Menide makes a motion to utilize $5,000 of ARPA funds for the purpose of purchasing various clean, various supplies as they relate to COVID-19. This could include, but not limited to, cleaning supplies, masks, hand sanitizers, and other supplies that are needed to protect citizens and employees throughout this ongoing pandemic.
Do I have a second?
A second?
Any discussion? Do a roll call?
Call ARPA.
Benoit Die.
White Menide.
And Nicholsye. All right. And the second request is for $35,000 for townwide overtime account to offset potential overruns at the end of the fiscal year due to the pandemic.
So, Mr. Chairman, this, this I think you can understand based upon the DPW director's comment, the police chief is here as well. We've had numerous employees who have been out sick as it relates to COVID, and when they leave, we have to backfill them with overtime in the various departments. So, we've had police, fire, DPW staff, among others, who have been out and we've had to use overtime. It's really not fair to the town's normal budget process to use our overtime line items for this. It's not what it was expected for. So, the fire chief is recommending putting 35 into a townwide account for, to help us with any of the overtime clauses that relate to this. And it, to me, it made a lot of sense and I think it will help our budget from our overtime accounts in various departments. This can be used for any town department, doesn't matter which one. It'll protect us from having shortages in our overtime accounts.
So, this is just to backfill people up due to COVID?
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions regarding your request?
Are any of these, I know that we could, there may have been, it may have expired, but going to the state and asking for some preparations for people that.
There's a part of the salary here, something that I did, I want to say it's $650 or $750, 750?
It's, it's below 800 bucks.
Yeah, 650, 750 that we can get reimbursement from the state for. That's for the salary of the personnel, but that doesn't deal with the overtime account. But there's for the salary of the personnel as well.
But if we could do that, it might help to offset.
It helps a little bit, but that, you know, that just offsets some of the salary we would pay and not even a lot of it, but it does help a little bit, so.
Any other questions? Did somebody make a motion?
White Menide makes the motion to utilize $35,000 for townwide overtime account to offset potential overruns at the end of the fiscal year due to widespread infections among staff. This would be coming out of ARPA funds as well.
Okay. And do I have a second?
A second.
No second.
Skip somebody, go over there.
No, I just, no.
No, you know?
Let it go for now.
All right. Any, any questions on roll call?
Call ARPA.
Benoit Die.
White Menide.
And Nicholsye. As far as goals and objectives, Ron gave us an update on the Economic Development Plan Committee. Anything new on the websites?
No, sir.
Board and commissions, I noticed what we've been advertising, if the vacancies are on the sign.
Also.
Oh, go ahead.
For boards and commissions, I got some names of agencies or professional companies that can do some, I just lost it. For the whole townwide boards and commissions kind of visioning session that we were talking about. So, I, I started reaching out to those just to get an estimated, estimate on cost and what they envision stuff to do. Some of the companies or agencies have websites, but some are just more of a phone number contact. This list came from the MMA. It's not endorsed by the MMA, but they're groups that they know other towns have utilized for a similar type function, so just kind of going forward with that. I think we also would need to have a conversation if we, when, if we finalize anything, based on the MMA and everything, is how we can create a safe space to really have some of those really good brainstorming sessions. I know in the past, it's been very adamant that everything has to be televised. Some of the presenters, facilitators may not be open to having things recorded. I'm not sure I will ask, but also having it posted as an open meeting versus televised, I think an open meeting allows the public that's interested to attend, but still creates a little bit of a safe space for those ideas to bounce around. There obviously would be detailed minutes and everything provided, but that's a conversation I think the board, if we start to move forward with, would need to have a serious conversation about that piece also.
We can consider this like training sessions? If we're not making any decisions, couldn't it just be training as opposed to an open meeting?
I, I just know in the past that there has been a lot, it's been a very contentious area that all the visioning had to be done televised and open and as widely, and then it came back to bite some of us in the butt. So, I just want to make sure that if we want to have an honest, and I think most productive use of a facilitator coming in to do this, we need to try to create as safe a space as possible to allow that honest-to-goodness brainstorming, throwing totally off-the-wall ideas to the wall to see what sticks versus the politics that plays into it sometimes.
So, Leah, thank you for that. And I actually went on the website and spent some time looking at her training for municipal boards and commissions, is what I used for the link. And there were a couple of towns on there that did some training. It was sort of interesting, though, that one of the trainings, Robert's Rules of Order, that was one of the things, ethics training is now one, although the state has an ethics training program, and open meeting law, those were some of the main training, and I felt good because we did those ones, so I felt good. And the other, the one that we don't do, and maybe, I'm not quite sure, I looked at some of the sites, is how to collaborate, you know? How do you get them to work together to collaborate in, particularly the chairs, how to get them to lead and stuff? That was one of the other things that I saw that we didn't do. I'm not sure, they really didn't, they just said it, the towns did it, but they didn't tell you how or what, but that was there. But that's one of the things you might want to ask about is the collaboration aspect of that, you know? So, thank you. I mean, I tried to find some stuff and there's really very little on there about it, so.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that? All right. Vacancies, you've talked about some of the positions you filled. We don't have any current vacancies that we're filling.
Any please?
Right.
No, well, I think we're going to be doing one dispatcher that I know of, one or two dispatches, but, but that's the only ones I can think of. Everybody else has pretty much said, I think.
Okay. And you read the budget process? All right. Just a reminder, we have the meeting with the ad hoc joint committee on January 31st. Does anybody have anything else before we retire to executive session?
After.
Huh?
After.
Well, I don't know if we're going to come back after. We're not going to come back after.
All right. I can't remember, I remember coming to the library some, some time ago, Weston and Sampson was holding it and vulnerable things that were going on. And one of the things I brought up was, has anybody ever checked out the generator sets, like over at the schools? In case of a hell, pardon my language, a heck of a storm, people have the right or to go into the schools for protection or something like that? But has anybody ever gone over there and pulled the main switch and find out if their generator works? You always hear your generator over here work for the, you know, you know? And I imagine hopefully, you know, somebody will go over there and pull the main switch to make sure, because you'd be surprised how many times you'll find that something, you know, screws up. And I brought that up with Weston and Sampson and that, but I never followed up on it. And I was thinking about Joe Buckley and all of a sudden, you know, but.
I imagine Seth would have that as part of his emergency plan.
That's exactly right. That's what I'm going to say.
But it'd be interesting to find out if it was ever done.
Yeah. Seth is on vacation this week. He's on a cruise, so when he gets back, I'll ask him the question, but the chair is absolutely right. The fire chief has emergency management plan that frankly, he talked about bringing the board again for review and approval, but that would be part of that emergency management plan, routinely checking not only on that, but making sure the equipment is available and COTS and all that stuff.
Yeah.
So, that would be part of his emergency management plan, but I don't know specifically if they check the generator part or not. I'm not even sure too, I'm not even sure which schools have generators. I'm sure there's only one or two.
Well, it's just something that, you know, stuck in the back of my mind and I just wanted to get it out, that's all. Thank you.
Joe, did you have something?
Only if you need me to answer a question. It's not like they're all set. I mean, we do service generators to town facilities, but we haven't done these.
Okay. Well, someone's going to make, make a motion to go.
Going to adjourn, to go into executive session for reason number three. Come out of the executive session only to adjourn.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Wait a second.
Okay. Roll call?
Call ARPA.
Benoit Die.
White Menide.
And Nicholsye. Includes the vote of electors meeting.